Good evening. It is 6:30 PM, Monday, November 1st, 2021. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call for meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you taken role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present, and you have a question.
Move on to the consent agenda. Board, you'll see the consent agenda. Is there any questions or discussions on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing no questions or discussion, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All seconded up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. Move on to Mayor's report. I have one item of discussion I want to discuss with the board this evening. And then if we could get a general consensus of the board's thoughts on my request, we'll move forward from there. Our request that our administrators spend some time on looking at a possible budget amendment that would be brought back to the board for future consideration or possibly be included on our next fiscal year budget. I would like for the City of Carney to offer all full-time employees a gym membership program to help us kind of add an incentive on our health and wellness program. I learned that Officer Andrew took the time to provide a report on the benefits of physical activity along with a formal request for reimbursement consideration for all full-time employees before I was mayor. This is a benefit that I would request that the board approve. I personally see and understand the need and importance. Besides the reasons Officer Andrew mentioned in his report, physical activity helps provide social connections, stress relief, heart health, more energy, weight management, productivity, disease prevention, and improve immune system, to name a few. This is an important benefit I feel that we must offer our staff. The benefits we receive from our staff's improved health and work performance will more than outweigh the cost, in my opinion. I'm asking for the board's support to request staff to look at the possibility of a budget amendment to allow reimbursement of up to $100 a month for each full-time employee for gym membership. For those employees that don't prefer a gym setting, I'm asking to offer $750 annually for reimbursement for gym equipment to use at home, as approved by the city administrator. All these would require the employee to pay for it first, provide documentation and a formal request to the administrator for approval. As I mentioned earlier, if we cannot make proper budget amendments to offer this relatively soon, this will be a priority item for me that we'll add on our next fiscal year budget. So thank you, Officer Andrew, for taking the time to do some of this research. Included, we did kind of what some of our peers at the city do. Some of them offer programs and incentives, some of them don't. But like I said, continue to look at improving our health and wellness program and being an employer choice. This is something I would recommend that we move on. Any questions or discussion from the board on my request?
I have a comment that I'd like to make. I'd like to see it on next year's budget because in this year's budget, we're going to have a better picture after we vote on the use tax of what our budgets are really look like. So not against it, I just think it'd be good to put in the next year's budget. That's just me.
Well, the use tax money is already identified for other items and...
That is correct. But if we don't, if it doesn't pass, and we have to put on, again, we may end up having some shortfalls down the road, and I don't want to overcomplicate just yet.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments in addition to... I think this is a wonderful idea. In addition to some of the benefits that you have already talked about, the other, some of the other things are reducing sick time and so increasing productivity. So those things are going to benefit the city in the long run. I think it will also help with recruitment and retention. Anytime that you can offer benefit packages that are rich in these kind of benefits, you're going to be above a lot of other competitors. And as we know, this is a employee market, not an employer market. And so trying to find a way to set us apart is always a good thing. The only other thing that I would suggest is maybe that we also look at being able to add, and maybe it's not $100 a month, but it's $25 a month or something, the ability to subscribe to online things, like Peloton offers a program that people can do at home. Or I think there's, you know, there's a lot of other apps where you pay 10 or 15 bucks a month, and you can do yoga or do whatever at home. And so I think that's a third option that might, we might want to consider.
That's what I, and I'm sorry if I didn't communicate that clear in the plan, but I guess I would consider that under the $750 annually for reimbursement for gym equipment used at home.
Okay.
Yeah, that could be, for whatever reason, people that may not prefer gym setting, whether it's membership fee for the Peloton, or an annual benefit to help pay for exercise equipment, smartwatches to track, you know, just all those things would be what I would envision that use for.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions? So I heard that Alderman Holt would prefer us looking at...
But prefer, don't have to, but prefer.
Yeah. But I am asking for us to look at, possibly looking at a budget amendment request for next meeting. I guess we'll have a formal report and update at our next board meeting. So we'll cross that bridge at that time. Thank you for being open to the idea, and I want to think that would be good for our staff. That concludes Mayor's report, and we'll move on to the administrative report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Engineer Greg Kendall has joined us on Zoom, and I'll ask him to make some comment on the Filterface piping rehab project. I had him up a couple of meetings ago to explain that project. We opened bids. The low bid was from Rand Construction Company for all phases of the project, totals $410,365. And in closing the agenda packet, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at, we have some pictures of those valves and piping that need to be replaced. And you will quite frankly wonder how those valves are holding together. The bolts are literally rotting on that. And one of the reasons is this is very low pressure. This is, these are conveyance pipes that come straight out of there. So we don't have high pressure on them, but they're simply shot. And we have, as our plan was when we bought water from Kansas City, we were to operate the plant as long as it was economically feasible. I think that this board has recognized the value of redundancy and has asked that we keep that plant operational longer. And so some years ago, we did an analysis on what needed to be done to keep that plant running. This was identified in that process, and it does come up to more than money than what we budgeted, was just about $115,000 to do the first phase. When it ends up closer to $200,000 for the first phase, we'd like to actually utilize the ARPA funding, which is specifically identified as being something that is eligible for use, with very, I mean, we just, it is, you know, black and white identification, water and sewer and stormwater projects, and all the use for this kinds of money. So we have prepared two resolutions, a resolution awarding the project and a resolution determining the project to be funded with ARPA. So you're making a determination that it is eligible for ARPA with the second resolution. And I'll quit talking and see if Greg has anything to bring in that I didn't mention.
Jim pretty well covered it. As he said, replacing the valves and the operators are a big part of this project. Some of the piping will also be replaced. It all gets painted, and we will also replace the washwater troughs and a little bit of the electrical and pneumatic piping that goes to those valve operators. And you probably remember there are four cells, and we structured the bid with a base bid that would be the first two cells, and alternate one was rehabilitating the next cells if it became necessary to break the project up or only do part of it. Of course, we're recommending that you do all four filter cells, and then the alternates three and four went with those base and alternate bids with some higher quality paints, some better paint. Part of the problem down there is being in that environment, there's a lot of humidity and a lot of sweating on the piping, and the better paint is supposed to help alleviate that and eliminate some of that sweating. Two bids were received, one from Rand, who we are not familiar with and we have not worked with before. They provided some references, and those all came back positive, and Rand is comfortable with their bid. We have also not worked with their electrical or painting subcontractors before, but again, we received some good information there. They're all long-term Kansas City firms, and we did speak with the paint manufacturer, Tenemic, who had positive things to say about the painting contractor. So we're recommending that you proceed with the low bidder.
Thank you. I had a conversation with Donnie Smith, board, and Jim. Donnie showed some information, since we weren't familiar with the contractor, but projects they worked on, UMKC, University of Kansas Hospital out at the airport. So we've got real good feedback on them. I think it's a phenomenal idea to move forward with the project in full and utilize ARPA funds. The US Treasury guidance from May 17, 2021, providing guidance to municipalities on what you can legally use this money on. The fourth example makes it very clear that investments in water, sewer, or broadband is a legal use of these funds. So with that being said, I'll open it up to the board. Do you have any other questions or have any feedback on both ordinances?
I personally think this is something we ought to do, and to be able to do all of it at this time and to use ARPA funds, perfect.
You know, and to me, it's more than just a redundancy. It's the cost effectiveness of having our own water, the quality and the public safety piece of, you know, all that control is, I think, important for us to consider, too.
Definitely.
I have dealt with Rand before.
Okay. That's good to know.
Another municipality. They do good work. They were extremely busy the last time I dealt with them. They were a little slower than what I was expecting, but they did good work. They got the job done, and they were a low bid on that project, too. So I have no problem with Rand.
There are no other questions? Do you want to read the first ordinance by title only on the first reading, please?
It is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a contract with Rand Construction for the water treatment plant, Filterface piping rehabilitation project for $410,365.
Make a motion to approval on first reading.
I'll second that.
And this is just one reading requirement.
Okay, one reading requirement.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second ordinance by title only.
Yeah. And these are resolutions, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the appropriation and budgeting of ARPA funds to make necessary water plant repairs pursuant to plans and specifications prepared by Lamprey-Nerson engineers and low bid award issued to Rand Construction of Kansas City, Missouri, in the amount of $410,335,000, and further determining city water plant repair project is an eligible expense of ARPA funds pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question.
Sorry.
So the dollar amount in that resolution is different than the first resolution?
$410,365, $410,335.
Thirty-five.
Thank you for correcting me on that. I always get those things wrong, and I need that kind of assistance there. Sixty-five is the corrected amount that needs to be in that resolution. So appreciate that.
Would you like to modify your...
Yes. I make a motion to approve this resolution in the amount of $410,365.
I will second that now.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes. Thank you.
They all look alike sometimes.
Oh, an afterthought.
Mr. Mayor, we are compiling a list of volunteers that will be helping us on November the 13th. And I, if you, some of the board members, I know you and your foreign exchange student son, is that what we call him?
I call him my host son, yeah.
My host son.
I'll be there.
And he's of legal age, and he can help us, and we appreciate that. But if anybody else wants to come down there and help, we'd like to get you on the list. You can just, if you want to, but, you know, there's lighter duty jobs. You don't have to do the hard stuff that, you know, let's see, our fire marshal's going to help us. I think I've got you down on the list for helping.
We'll be in town.
Now, that ends up being the first day of deer hunting season and turkey hunting season.
I would help if someone wanted to come and watch the museum for a while.
Does that conclude your report?
If that's concluded my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have no public requests and petitions, no public hearings, no old business. Do you have an item under new business to consider and ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, the city's been approached by Intercept Wireless, which we understand to be a local company, seeking a permit to construct a fiber system in the residential areas south of 19th Street. And we're talking the entire area. So we currently don't have the procedures adopted that would establish a minimum financial responsibility for criteria that is permitted by state law. Therefore, we're bringing forward an ordinance that does establish those procedures that are permitted by state law, and we're doing this in order to help expedite our work with them. And so we would ask that you all consider approval of the enclosed proposed ordinance, and...
Further explain, what you're talking about with the fiber system, is this like a fiber line going up for businesses, or is this the houses?
This is, this is right to the houses. This is fiber to the home, and they intend to do all of the, Jerry is showing you a map that shows you...
Oh, I missed that.
Quite an extensive bill, and we do want to make sure that when they get into the right-of-way, that they have the necessary credentials and bonding that we would expect of anyone building such a system.
So this ordinance is just obviously establishing that requirement?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor.
Any additional report from staff? Any questions from the board? Can you read that ordinance? First reading by title only, please.
An ordinance adopting regulations and procedures relative to rights of way management on public roadways, highways, streets, or alleyways in which the city has an ownership interest, including such adjacent area as such public ways within such ownership interest, and repealing Chapter 510 of the City Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Got a first motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance adopting regulations and procedures relative to rights of way management on public roadways, highways, streets, or alleyways in which the city has an ownership interest, and including such adjacent area of such public ways within such ownership interest, and repealing 510 of the City Code of Ordinances.
Make a motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Motion unanimous, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Next item of business, we do have an executive session noticed up this evening. In accordance with RSMO 610021, the board may go into closed section during the meeting disclosed matters of litigation, legal actions, and/or communication from the city attorney as provided under Section 610021, Subsections 1, 2, and 3. Consider motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Motion unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
We'll enter executive session at 6:51, and as soon as we turn to executive session, we'll come back to this platform to finish our meeting. we'll come back to this platform to finish our meeting.
Loud and clear.
All right, we did adjourn at seven thirty-five. Executive session with no action taken. We'll move on to Alderman's discussion. Alderman Spencer.
Nothing I can think of this evening.
Alderman, hold.
Vote, chief.
Vote tomorrow. Got to vote tomorrow.
Yes.
You know, I was really proud of Halloween here for the kids. We had, you know, with COVID last year, we didn't have much of kids. So all the kids came out today for Halloween. They were very, you know, kind of spread out. They were so courteous. I thought that it was kind of neat. It was really wholesome this year to watch kind of small-town Halloween things happen. We didn't know how many was going to happen, so we bought one big bag and we went through that. And my neighbor, because they were having trouble getting candy, because everybody was buying up candy, they gave away a hot chocolate packet. Kids, that was kind of cool. They were using them like pixie sticks. But it was, it was, I was really, I don't know if it's because last year was such a dud or what, but Thanksgiving or Halloween was, was pretty good this year. And everybody was very courteous. You watched people driving. They were really watching out for kids. And it was just good.
Did you help give out candy at City Hall?
No, I did not. I was aware of giving out, well, supposed to be giving out candy, but we only had, what, three kids come through, so I'm wondering.
Alderman Lehman?
Get out and vote tomorrow.
Alderman Barker?
I just wanted to say there were a lot of Halloween events over the weekend. And I came through town, I think Friday afternoon, and there were a ton of kids in the, at the splash park. And that looked like it was a rousing success. So I was super excited to see that. I did not make it out to Jesse James Park to the scary, the scary walk. I don't know that I could have handled that. I might have been too scared to go. But I think that there's great city pride and great things going on in the community. It's amazing to see how much stuff goes on downtown now. And that's really exciting to me because it's, I've lived here for a lot, a lot of years. And this is the most vital that I have seen downtown in probably 25 years. So it's exciting. And I will add my, please make sure that you are going to the polls tomorrow. It's very important for this community, so.
Did we mention it's important to vote tomorrow?
I think.
All right. Sure that message is out there. Six, six AM to seven PM.
Oh, seven?
Seven.
Yeah.
And there's two polling locations in our community, the Annunciation Center and Lutheran Church. That concludes Alderman's discussion. Can we entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
So moved.
Second that.
All in favor?
I.
I.